Recording in progress. I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. If everyone would please rise from their homes and pledge allegiance. Call please. Mayor Pete, President, Commissioner Roberts. President, Commissioner Forbes.
Yes.
Commissioner Reiki. Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Cancelary, President, Commissioner Gallas. All Commissioners, members present with the exception of Commissioner Reiki. May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Reiki?
So.
We have a motion from Commissioner Gallas and the second from Commissioner Miller. Call please. Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Forbes.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Cancelary, yes. Commissioner Gallas.
Yeah.
Mayor Pete, yes. Well, well, that Commissioner Shores. May I get a motion to approve the agenda? We have a motion from Commissioner Cancelary and a second from Commissioner Gallas. Call please. Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Cancelary, yes. Commissioner Gallas.
Yes.
Mayor Pete, yes. Yes, Commissioner Forbes.
Yes.
Now it's time for public comment regarding items on the agenda. If you wish to speak inside, inside the city chambers, just please come up to the podium and please state your name and address. Name, the place of residence, and if, uh, just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit which you will see on the screen. Once we have exhausted our public comment inside the city chambers, we will then open it up to the Zoom participants. We will begin now for items on the agenda.
My name is Chris Jacobson. I'm the president of the City of Adrian. Excuse me, come to you today, we have the city's most premier cannabis companies, Amazing Buds. Appreciate the opportunity to have a public comment today to follow the current ascent of commissioners regarding the hours of operation. Wherein we learned that a local competitor that is newly opened in East Street by the Fairgrounds. They being in Madison Township are able to be open till eleven P M. Um, they're doing so, and so our company feels at a disadvantage, uh, in comparison to this business and other localities like the rest of the states such as Monroe, Jackson, and Arby, Buffalo. The industry is a very volatile, super duper ultra competitive industry, and we need to make sure everyone love the playing field. From the City of Adrian's perspective, it should be a big win. Not only for tourism revenue, which we have helped contribute greatly with out-of-town traffic that we have. But in labor perspective as well. Up to, you know, fourteen hours, being able to be open two hours later each day, that's fourteen hours there and another hour to, to complete closing routines. We made sure that we've been a world-class business and doing everything compliant, even by the book. Make sure that we have the opportunity to, to compete and do good things. So if you guys have any comments, information, if you have any questions or concerns that you would want to respond to. Appreciate the opportunity to bring this issue to attention.
Here.
My name is Chip Moore. I'm here to discuss what you have on the agenda today. Based for the administration, our inclined vote for the thorough resolution without policy procedure for the entry made not to nine o'clock. I have this speech before he discusses because I was looking at the policy. I know it's set in the months here, commissioners may not respond to public comment. But I was wondering if I could show a hand. Has all the commissioners to inform me? Art, it's not more. I'm a desert storm back. And I'm looking at this policy, speaking about the policy for two hundred years. The mayor, the city manager, it's important with the individuals because if you look at the memorial. Civil War, looking at things hit by the citizens of Adrian, not by the city commission. Raised money for it and they put it up. And now it needs maintenance. So if somebody in the city community, they raised money for it. Because the tax payers, the bail levies, everybody, just like, I don't think years ago it was watching the monument, watching the scene. It was cooperation that raised money from the payments that money. No one disagreed, it was the one that they got advertised for what they did. So, um, my proposal would like anything you can do. Because since you've already been down there, it's kind of embarrassing because some people didn't want to. The work that was supposed to be put out for advertising the base of the monument. But to me, that's a new point because if you've all been down there since eighteen seventy, there have been advertising bricks. So I'm not sure what the deal is. So I would like to propose to withdraw that proposal. I believe I'm a Republican, this Peter Bolden is a Democrat. I'm actually trying to learn what is to. Show a tone of reconciliation or something for, because the Confederacy has never been a public and it's what they did. But I'm looking for, and since COVID, the price has gone up. And I'm willing to raise money for additional money to raise it, as long as we can continue with the building since eighteen seventy, advertising the roads. Thank you very much.
Here. Second chambers, we will now open it up to the Zoom participants. Here. Commissions, and we have a Juneteenth confirmation. Hopefully many of you were able to come down for the celebration that happened this past Saturday. Celebrating announcements we're going to, are we this confirmation that our city hall is also closed on Thursday, June nineteenth, in honor of. Whereas Justice Adrian Reiki signed the Emancipation Confirmation on February first, eighteen sixty-three, declaring the slaves and veterans territory free, making the way through the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas word of the signing of the Emancipation Confirmation was delayed some two and a half years to June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, in reaching authorities and African-Americans in the South and Southeastern United States. At the Fairgrounds, Emancipation Day observations are held on different days in different states in the South and Southeast and other parts of the nation. And where June nineteenth has a special meaning to African-Americans, it is called "Buteen", combining the words "June" and "nineteen", and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over one hundred and fifty years. Now, let me report on Mayor Julie Key, Mayor of the City of Adrian, Michigan. Do hereby proclaim June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, "Juneteenth in Adrian", and urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and heritage of our nation and our city. This will be on display in the city hall outside the mayor's office. Or until then, until we have to deliver from that until then, just wanted to let you know that as well. Moving on to our informational discussion topics, first up, we have the vacant building ordinance update.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the community development director, if you approve his presentation for you.
Good evening. Thanks, Mayor. Commissioners are allowing us to give a little bit of information, update on the vacant property ordinance. I've come up with our team, we have a discussion, there are some things you'll see in the chat, which are updated for the ordinance. But I will go through some details, and then we'll follow up with some progress that will be made inside our apartment. So this is our article topic section ten, it was updated November of last year, if you schedule one, so you'll see that as we go through the presentation as well. The purpose and goals of the vacant property inspection program, both residential and commercial, is to improve the public safety and neighborhood preservation, property values, economic development, and reduce light. Whole property owners are vulnerable, or with investments they have in our communities, so that they don't lose the assets from the first. None of these social impacts, these are more on the negative side, reduce tax revenue, which you're probably depreciate that less. Tax revenue coming, increase public safety costs, and diminish the property values. Is practical nuisance and then public concerns. Our registration and initial inspection is adopted, actually, is two hundred dollars for each of the natural unit, unless it's all the family housing, then it's an initial one for a unit over the one unit, and next six hundred dollars for a day. Per building, for commercial registration and initial inspection. Monitoring inspections, so this is a program that's every year, monitor every year, that is a hundred dollars plus ten dollars for each additional volume. It's multi-handling, and then for commercial is three hundred dollars for the monitoring inspections. And if you have any reviews of reactive inspections, if it's wanting to, if you want to do that, then it's a hundred dollars, ten dollars for each additional volume, three hundred dollars. So for same thing as monitoring. Securing vacant properties, we charge whatever costs us to work that property, we do need to secure the property. And then link fees are a hundred dollars. If the property is vacant more than six months, we would need to consult with the official to make sure that it doesn't have any zoning compliance issues as well. And then after three years, the property is vacant, inspected every six months. So since January this year, we have identified sixteen commercial properties and thirty-one residential properties. These numbers will probably continue to grow, but the goal is to be zero and zero. The goal is to get it where it is, there are none that are being addressed. So we will see over time, as I report back six months from now, this might double. And as we go through the summer months, we will check, those will be down to five. Identifying vacant properties, I would be identifying vacant properties, we're basically went around, looking around, looking to identify vacant properties. But take a closer look at that, but also when we start to close upon or reassess the things, they let us know in the current projects to go out and address that right away. The registration and inspection process, they have to inspect their registers and they probably, they will address mostly in the exterior issues. If it's commercial, then we have to wait, find out the interiors, maybe like we can't make somebody forget what a structure. I'm not sure what the future business is going to be built up to be. In some cases, the property is beyond a fair and fair determination, like what property we'll see in this slide. That is the aftercare, and we are going to start the definition process on that, which is here, just a few blocks away. And then regroupable from the vacant property registration form is a process that we go through with our division to. If it's not being used, where it's currently running, that is used, they can be removed from the vacant property registration form, just gets reoccupied. Some people expect that property for a single family, and then removes that from the list. They'll even register a schedule inspection, that becomes a civil infraction effort that we pursue through the court system. That process is quite lengthy, and it can take up to several months to, for us to complete that process. And unpaid registration and inspection fees, if they remain unpaid, the ordinance does allow us to, with the tax process, actual assessment, secure those funds at that time. Now, there's some of the successes that we've had, this is a gas station that's across from Comstock Park, there's no longer there, so we've addressed this property and removed that, like. This one is up in Church and Pepsi Street, that one also removed, the company still remains, but the building is gone. This is the Charlotte Stevenson home, I guess most know it by now, and the post office is currently being tapped. It's being entered on the review, and so we have that property, we are pursuing demolition order on this particular property. So that will start soon, the property is no longer settled, the roof is leaking, yes, some air leaks. Commercial vacant, just across the street, the opening Lloyd currently in negotiations with a real estate company, and there's some administrators working with them to make sure that they meet all some requirements. As far as spending, dumpsters, and those sorts of things. A residential, this is on Lee Street, this is before and after, and this particular property, we should have taken on the property as part of the vacant property inspection process. There's interior and exterior work that's currently being done, and the exterior is currently being done at this time. This one's on Hunt Street, this particular house was in compliance for many years, it's on the left-hand side. With our teams, constantly, we were able to get them to the owner, the original owner, so to develop her, and then they have their, they've lived it, and brought it back on the tax bills. But on Street, this one again, a vacant project, the team were trying to get this one demolished. Second, which is your vacant lot, and this is currently what's being reconstructed at the same sites, we'd like to see a little bit more of this as time goes by, especially our residential areas. And the features to me is also a vacant project, they realized with the first one, first one that they had, that we were serious and took it upon themselves to complete the process of having that. Property to permission is ready for new construction. So the next thing is on the agenda, the item, our request is we have taken a look at the ordinance itself. A few things that we'd like the commission and mayor to look at, to see if we can change. Properties within the overspend portion of your residence, we'd like to add language that identifies that verification of partial residency could include utility bills, water registration, mail, and judicial documents, like license bank statements, because that's not in the ordinance, so it's kind of hard for us to determine how we verify if it is a part of your residence outside of the. The whole setting. Second one is, properties located within the boundaries of the downtown building, or is it a window, something, a street level space, shall be covered with an approved decorative treatment and makes an active store. So we would like to recommend that we would approve various drawings we use for this purpose in the downtown building. In the downtown, we'll be taking a deep, um, about that, which I agree to, and approval as well, that we want that to be part of that process. And a couple of examples are this one, and I know we had a few other buildings that were recently demolished that were great ideas too. So this is just an example of what we're talking about, not just a vacant store. And then for your storm damage recovery, we have nine days as the amount of time between fire and then when they have to secure, prevent, or destruction, demolition. We all feel like that's a reasonable amount of time, that we'd like to, one hundred and twenty days. Going through the insurance process can be quite a, like, the period of time, so we have that a little bit more time, like, across the number. And then for requested reuse and occupancy, knowing it's structured, shall be reoccupied until inspection and probably in compliance with the current building code. Word that just needs to be changed from occupancy to compliance. It is not a certificate of occupancy, like you would obtain according to destruction. We just want it to be in compliance with this ordinance, so just requesting commission to change that occupancy to. And the fee for a right to appeal is incorrect, our ordinance, it's two hundred dollars, and we have listed that hundred and fifty dollars, we'd like to request permission to change that as well. Any questions about those before I can finish up? So just an update on the accomplishments in our division, I know this might be a little bit hard to see, but we've had twenty-eight. Wilbur Brass League pickup, we've had a hundred and forty-eight trash, two hundred and twenty-five violations for. To a minute, so this is since of Janu, this is from January first until now, we've had seventy municipal ordinance violations, one hundred and twenty-nine property maintenance violations, hundred and forty-eight sidewalks snow, seventy-seven weeds, and sixty-three zoning ordinance violations, which is a total of eight hundred eighty-eight actions that our staff and team have accomplished since January this year. To address some of the complaints and just ordinance issues. And the last couple of slides that I have, just an update on the Adrian Hall demolition. This, I got the feedback from the project managers that are from New York, last couple of weeks, along with the enforcement. And they are asking for an extension of their demolition, but they are actively working inside and for optics reasons. We did ask if they were moving from campus, this is Adrian Hall, and with that, so we can start to see things happening. The goal is that there will be a wall created in between both the board and the area just to the right, where it says Adrian Mall, we, at least will be demolished. So we did provide, like, within nineteen seventies blueprints, so they could design this wall and they will construct it there first. So on the inside, we'll be done in, then in the second week of August, they'll start that new wall, and then shortly thereafter, a few sidewalks will come down. A little slower progress than what we want, but we don't want it to slow it down, we take any corrections, so we've come up with a plan to keep the project moving. And also staging for some really exciting news in regards to this mall, we've still got Adrian Mall, but there's going to be some projects going up to do a new life in the community. That we'll announce it later day. And a new, well, an update on this one is the city of Kansas, this is on Seattle, I know you've probably seen it, it would be, it's surrounded for a very, very long time. And last week, we did issue that a building permit finally, and it will be getting started on every new construction here very soon, so that's a long time in the making. Uh, this particular property is at the corner of George Streets, and the property, all where we conducted, part of it myself, and our building official, conducted an onsite inspection on this property last Thursday. We found numerous safety concerns, code violations, we're creating a list, by a long list of so many. We found numerous safety concerns, code violations, we've made a list, quite a long list of so many ordinance violations. And so those properties are not allowed to be used until further notice. I can see his permit on this particular property. What do you do with those vacant property, you can call me, you can email myself, or anybody's on our staff, our information is available online. There's some new things to come between the partnership with San Antonio College, Adrian College, Community Development Division. And we'll bring that back to you with an update and also report, they will report back to you at the end of November to the city commission. Things that they have found in their study that we're going to start. That's all I have, any questions?
Yes, I'll bring you.
Yes, I guess.
You can bring it up in the public comment later.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Lisa, I really appreciate that you're working to work with, especially the Adrian family and other people to, to make it work for them. To say, you know, we have done it. I think that's some of the conception that this oftentimes we see those deadlines against the property. But there is always exceptions to the rule. On your working and speaking with the city, we'll work with you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I would like to hear from the audience exactly what we mean. A lot of the things that I've seen and I've heard, I think it's a number of education. I don't know if people really know some of the rules that are happening that we have. Tommies can be, but it can happen in the yards. And all of the various impressions that we've talked about tonight, so we've talked about this many, many times, but how do we make sure the people that. Have lived in here, have lived here in Adrian for years, understand that there are community. Standards that, that are, that we'd like to hold people accountable, so right now it's going to be time for audience participation, but. I'd be willing to listen to anyone after the meeting, if you're having a little bit of a second, with information. Moving on to our next topic, we have a mandatory hours discussion.
Thank you, Mary. Something just came up before, a couple of months ago was brought up. I think was you received the correspondence from basin buds, the talk to public seems to be in favor of change of. Past places, I only can give you space to discuss that, if that's something you want to pursue, make this change.
Thank you, commissioners, and I'd like to bring this forward as a discussion. I may be in the favor of extending the hours for a couple of reasons. I have several younger friends who have either worked in business or have this business, and. One of the things they said is that if there's not a ton of traffic at that time of night, it will help with some of the traffic and I do. I do think that the competition from everyone in next in touch could hurt some of the local businesses. Yeah, we need to stay competitive. The second thing that concerns me is the culture of flourish. In a year or so, we get a. For the emersement, I'm not exactly sure, it's called from the state for, for money from marijuana sales in the city. Flourish was a huge part of that, but it's a big chunk of money coming back to the city and I'm concerned that without flourish around, we will. They're going to say, we're obviously going to stay weaker in that. Those are my reasons. I also was a bit of a being for this board, I was also seeing that there, there isn't that, you know, because of that, that competition as well and. I think I have not been able to find a negative harm in accepting those hours at least at this point. Do you know specifically how that's happened? Do you want anything, we're looking for that as well?
Well, with all the change to our ordinance, so if you have time in mind, we need to write it, also have a bigger. Yes.
Yes, that's why I'm working on making sure that they're ready. So just so that everybody understands how the order change works, there's a first reading. We're not discussing, there's not, you can do public comment, we're doing public comment. We, we don't do the action until the meeting after that. And that's when we have our discussion and that is when that happens, so it's not something that will happen by the next meeting, just to make you fully aware, it's just a first reading. Just want to make sure that that's clear for everybody. Are there any other questions that the commissioners want to bring forward? Not to the set agenda, we have a motion to adopt the set agenda. We have a motion from Commissioner Casereri with the segment from Commissioner Miller, roll call please. Commissioner Casereri, yes.
Yes.
Mayor Pete, yes. Commissioner Roberts, yes. Commissioner Ford, yes. Commissioner.
Yes.
Moving on to our regular special orders. We have special order one, a public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the establishment of an industrial development district for property at nine zero six James Street. Hearing open, you may approach, or yes, if you wish to speak during the public hearing. Or you can speak on Zoom as well. If you want to address it on. Hearing no comment. I call this public hearing closed, moving on to special order dash two. Public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the establishment of an industrial development district for property at thirteen fifty Southern Division Street. I call this public hearing open, if anybody wishes to speak, we do so at this time. Hearing no comment. I call this public hearing closed, moving on to special order dash three. A public hearing to hear and consider comments regarding the establishment of an industrial development district for property at six hundred East Major Street. I now call this public hearing open. If you wish to speak, we do so at this time. Hearing no comment. This public hearing closed, moving on to resolutions. Resolution R twenty five dash zero thirty six is from economic development. Here's a resolution to establish an industrial development district for property at nine zero six James Street. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution? So far. Are there any discussion or comments like commissioners this time? Just to say it's great that the book that's been sent over for seventy five upstairs is expanding, that's great. And with. Still, we're going to change to Adrian, it just came out last week. So we have a motion from Commissioner Gouse with a segment from Commissioner Roberts, roll call please. Commissioner Gouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pete, yes. Commissioner Roberts, yes. Commissioner Ford, yes. Commissioner Miller, yes. Commissioner Casereri, yes. Resolution R twenty five dash zero thirty seven is from economic development. Here's a resolution to establish an industrial development district for property at thirteen fifty seven Division Street. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution? Is there any discussion on this resolution? We have a motion from Commissioner Casereri with a segment from Commissioner Roberts, roll call please. Mayor Pete, yes. Commissioner Roberts, yes. Commissioner Miller, yes. Commissioner Casereri, yes. Commissioner Ford, yes. Commissioner Max, yes. Motion carried. Resolution R twenty five dash zero thirty eight is from economic development. It is a resolution to establish an industrial development district for property at six hundred East Major Street, may I get a motion to adopt the resolution? So. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing done, we have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a segment from Commissioner Gouse, roll call please. Commissioner Roberts, yes. Commissioner Ford, yes. Commissioner Casereri, yes. Commissioner Gouse, yes. Motion carried. Resolution R twenty five dash zero thirty nine is from the Main Street DVA. It's a resolution to award a bid for the Library Square playground project, may I get a motion to adopt the resolution? So. If you haven't seen the picture of something that they are in the back, so you can online see what the pictures of them, but I'm going to be. Yes, this is very near to my heart, the DVA is very tired of me, of me at all the time, but it's something that we've heard a lot. Educator of preschool children, so yes, I mean, I do have warrants, but I. A lot of member families and they always are saying, there's nothing downtime for the young children to do, what are we supposed to do with the young children, what are we supposed to do? We want to stay out there, we want to be out there, but there's nothing for our children, so. They have to be very, I was so very excited when this was presented to the DVA last week, it's very exciting. Look forward to this and giving something for our member families to be able to do downtime as well. We have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a segment from Commissioner Casereri, roll call please. Commissioner Wood, yes. Commissioner Miller, yes. Commissioner Casereri, yes. Commissioner Gouse, yes. Mayor Pete, yes. Commissioner Roberts, yes. Motion carried. Resolution R twenty five dash zero forty is from administration. It is a resolution to adopt a policy and procedure for the entry of names into our unit park. May I get a motion to adopt a resolution?
Support.
Is there any discussion or commissioner comments on this? Resolution, I do, I have a couple of things. That's where it needs to be, it's not really clear. I just wonder if we can table it in, we work it a little bit and bring it back for discussion, adoption. One of my questions is, people that should be named in the park in any one of these, should they be used in the evening residence? Should they be isolated within their community residence? What's the relation to the city park that fits their name in there? So that's just one question that I have to read every day for the weekend. I feel like I don't have enough, I'm not quite there with this ordinance. Hey, with having more than a day, just I get used to it. Sorry, well, we're in discussion right now, so I can. I'm making a motion that we table that. Thank you for second, but I was hoping that somebody would want to, well, the folks same way. I just, I do feel it just needs to be, uh, looked at a little. So, yes.
Commissioner Maggie sent me similar comments, so let's, it's basically on street naming policy, but yeah, definitely.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Roberts with a segment by Commissioner Gouse to table. Resolution R twenty five dash zero forty, roll call please. Commissioner Casereri, yes. Commissioner Gouse, yes. Commissioner Roberts, yes. Commissioner Ford, yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. It is now time for the public comment, this is general public comments, it has to be something on the agenda. Just to reiterate, it was in three minute time limit for the record to be stated in a name and place of residence. While we have exhausted all public comment inside the city chambers, we will then open up to the zoom participants, we will begin now. Hello, city of Asia, I just wanted to make a big shout out and a big thank you to our public works guys. Who did make clean up, you know where it was, you know where it is. It's all squeaky clean now, the pets be, the truck is gone. Heat's gone. I'm going to clean up. After this presentation a couple of weeks ago, I was in the light, they were addressing. I noticed some amazing changes on the first street. There was a house that had been huge, well, I mean, we're talking outside, in the yard. It's one, the house next door had a whole crew of skeletons on the yard. But certainly they did have a major sign over time, but they've now been relegated to a recent front porch, so the skeleton crew is gone. And I think the common denominator is for the community development person and city administrator, so thanks for getting that. Thank you. I'm going to read quickly. Hearing heard. I'm going to speak about concerns I have to say for residents, hearing heard, Adrian, there you go. I'm here to speak about the concerns I have regarding in cooperation between local law enforcement and ICE agents. Adrian is home to many immigrants, the majority of whom are following the rules and attempting to gain citizenship. We're talking about friends, students. And coworkers. Who contribute seamlessly to our community and economy. Simply being out of status in this country is not a criminal, that means no victim can do that. It's a civil offense unless there was a previous removal order that was ignored, or they entered without being admitted legally. But according to research, around forty five percent of non-citizens originally came with authorization. We're talking about people seeking asylum, students, people with visas. The immigration process is complicated and simply have not yet completed legal requirements. But for most of their mere existence in this country and in the city is not a crime. And while the right are testing that those are being swept up in violent unconstitutional. Mass arrests, we can be wrong. There are quotas to meet and this is no longer about keeping people safe. Currently, there is no legal requirement for local law enforcement to assist ICE. Local police and city officials have a responsibility to keep the residents of this community safe. And that includes all immigrants, undocumented, dark community, and out of status. Who at this rate now are still protected by the constitution. We do not need to identify as sanctuary city in order to be taught. We need local police to be trained to understand what they need to do and what they do not need to do. Legally, they are not required to assist ICE agents, but they are required to hold the law and ensure masked, violent, unconstitutional arrests do not happen in the city with their assistance. And the House of Representatives. Thank you.
Well, my parents, the city leader resident has. I'll be into what the papers are a second, but the residents and neighbors, on June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five, something happened in Adrian, that must never happen again. Residents of the city, some uncle, some parents, some dreamers, were detained without words, without any protestant, what we've heard. And without the basic idea of explanation to anybody. And it's happened, we're across the street, that very day, we stood in protest, the big reason why they were there was due to these illegal actions that happened. But the word of the notice, Adrian, Michigan made international penitentiaries, we have in front of you is the biggest newspaper in Mexico. And it talks right about. It's called, um, it's called. In a print, he had on across its front page that, um, English means, uh, we have no kids. They named Adrian, Michigan, as a city standing for justice. Photos of our subjects in Adrian were ones across the, uh, front of that newspaper. This is who we have always been, I've been working with the West Undermail Committee over the last two years, past year. And I've read and researched Adrian's history and let me be clear, he did not stand through this. This project was not of a character, it was a reminder of Adrian's roots. In the eighteen hundreds, Laura Smith had moved to help the enslaved people, uh, escape to freedom. When a gentleman came to her home, she told her, I fear not, not getting either of your weapons nor your threats. Later, our own governor, President, uh, former mayor, mayor, left ratification, led to the ratification of the Thirteenth Amendment reform of prisons. And government with honor and strength, we have never paid permission for permission to do this right. Or she wanted to become a national development equal rights advocate in her primary. With her statue in our city, we cannot do her, we cannot stand in pride without doing anything about this happening, these are our citizens. This is difficult, but there are some things that we can do. Some suggestions in the last couple of seconds, uh, before the investigation into the June fourteenth detention intentions. Publish transparent report within fourteen days identifying. These actions, pass a new process ordinance that guarantees nobody's president is detained or transferred without a warrant, legal counsel, and a form review. Please help, please help, press it out with your mind.
I'm going to speak, um, I'm going to speak as a county president, I can speak as a county president. And here I need to speak of a great concern as people travel around the city. My first point is that it's difficult. The Adrian Police Department has a fundamental duty to protect every single member of our community. This includes their laundry friends and friends who are familiar with the city. We are witnessing what, uh, this threat is a subtle bribery, but employees often identify them as criminals. The faces covered in weapons thrown at them, seizing individuals from our streets, burning their cars, and putting them in boxes. The Adrian Police Department has the authority and deep the obligation to intervene and stop these actions that are jamming our neighbors' security. We accept our local law enforcement to fulfill the safety and rights of all residents, not stand by all federal agents operating within community and our city. Secondly, let me be clear, we, the city of, citizens of Adrian, are not accepting illegal entry. We will have tolerated these actions which appears to be filled by people others from our community, to enable these creatures to access. People are being threatened, property is being seized, and they're forced from their vehicles simply while trying to go out for a daylights. All of them are in a state of illegal process. This is not behavioring at all. This is not a manner of way to leave it. We refuse to live under a system where anonymous individuals can terrorize our residents above our ability. I know that our community has our own social norms. We have already always been collecting this approval of these tactics. We have told you unequivocally that we do not want to accept any of them. And let me assure you, we will continue to show up. We will continue to make our voices heard and completely and clearly interviewed. Our elected representatives, listen to us and take this sign-stip action to protect all these single residents in Adrian. This is not just a request, it is a demand for a community that expects its leadership to stand with its people. Please, do something about this. You can at least require them to show proper warrants, show actual reasons why, show some form of due process instead of. Being told that we know that they're here and that's okay with us to watch the Adrian Police Department officers watch this. These two men need to be detained on the fourteenth. Be forced to use their vehicles. No standard subject process we have here, and this is still one of our priorities, as well as the state.
Hello. My name is Eric Lomond, I'm here in Adrian. I am the founder, the director of Open Action, a grassroots organization that provides mutual aid and community support right here in Adrian. I think tonight I speak on a great application of civil rights that took place in our community just this past February. While I was at Compton Park, there were peaceful protests, four members of our organization would explain local agents detain individuals directly across the street from the Dollar Tree. These agents refused to identify themselves. When asked if they had warrants, they responded, we don't need one. Every vehicle that was used had expired license plate. I will keep the footage I spoke with the witnesses I seen myself. And here's what's worse, Adrian police officers were sitting across the street, watching it happen, they did nothing. This is not a rumor, this is not misunderstanding, this happened broad daylight in our town, while law enforcement looked the other way. Let's be clear, this level of secrecy, intimidation, and lawlessness is new. Hacks administrations, including Obama and violence, reported violations, but they followed the procedure, there were warrants, uniforms, accountability. What we saw on Saturday was immigration enforcement, there was a kidnapping. At Open Action, we believe in public safety, but also in due process. Yes, violent, pretty criminals should be removed, but no one in this country should be disappeared without a lawful warrant or a badge. Everyone can do as well as worries, everyone, that's not what, that's the constitution. I ask you, what is Adrian's policy on ICE cooperation? Will you condone these illegal, unaccountable intentions? Will you act in Adrian on a place where fear does not go unshut? Because silence is complicity to the community's watching, thank you.
I'm here to receive him by West End of Deerfield, and I'm here because I'm concerned about what's happening in our community as well. On Friday, there was an ICE raid in Adrian, and four people were taken. Saturday, right before the No Kings Rally, there were two more arrests made at the Dollar Tree, as you've heard. And four more people were taken from the Alpha Community Island later in the day. Yesterday, ICE was at homes on McKenzie Street, again trying to take more families. From my understanding, all of these people were going through the legal channels of immigration. And today, ICE was at community room in Adrian and Alpha in Westfield. When asked for a warrant, they said they didn't need one and their vehicles had expired plates. My concern is, how do we know that these supposed ICE agents are domestic terrorists? They have no qualified credentials, are passed, and again, are driving vehicles with expired plates. We need the local authorities to be verified that these are legit ICE agents and that our friends and neighbors are getting due process. This is beyond scary and infuriating, as these thugs could easily be impersonated. Government officials and again, domestic terrorist groups like KKK, Proud Boys, Purple Keepers. The wife that was laughing during that Saturday in the Dollar Tree parking lot had no way to get into her vehicle, which was running with her spare keys in it. A P D had to let her into her car. Common sense says that prior to the two men being taken, it should have been verified that they were legit and the car turned up, so this situation could have been prevented. This poor woman is on dialysis and has no one to take care of her. Is this really how we want to treat our neighbors? Adrian and all of Unbreak County needs to know that we do not want ICE here kidnapping our neighbors and that this is unacceptable, thank you.
Hi, my name is Lindsay, um, I'm resident in Chetan, company here in the whole area. Um, I'm here for the same reasons as Barbara here, uh, but one thing that I can't stop thinking about are the kids. Um, I've got any of that kid, straight kids, possibly, I'm, I have a child, I need to make her, I think about. I want you to picture your kids, think about their faces. I want you to think of the joy you see when they're doing something that they really like. Think of all their giggles and their smiles and their cuddles and their hugs. Right now, I want you to think of their face, I put you when they get picked up at daycare or at daycare that, I'm sorry, but mommy's not coming home today. I just picked her up on the way home. Or, sorry, but your dad won't be coming home, I just picked him up at the construction site he was working at. Or, we're trying to figure out who to call and come and get you because mom and dad were taken by ICE while picking strawberries today. Think of your child or your grandchild. Think of your child's babysitter or teacher or a neighbor delivering this news to your child. Picture a C P X worker or a police officer telling your child that you and your spouse will be coming home. Now, I know that many of you have felt the devastation of losing someone suddenly, and I understand that this is not the same as someone passing away. But the emotional damage of losing your parent suddenly is irreparable, irreparable. And now it's happening here, luckily, out in Adrian daily. And for what, these people aren't criminals, they're not gangsters, these are the guys that change your types. These are the men that spend all day in the hot sun replacing your room. These are the people that pick your favorite Michigan grown fruits and vegetables. These are the men who serve your food and your favorite Mexican restaurant. Their children are your children's friends, they go to your church, they didn't sneak into the country, they have visas, they green cards, and work permits. They are part of this community and they're being kidnapped and imprisoned with no warrants, no due process, just suddenly stripped completely of status by changed rule and officers from an old world slave, he goes and ships on their shoulders. And I'm saying that at the bar of a sheriff's deputy. Our neighbors need help. Please do what you can to stop this trauma that ICE and the current administration has unleashed. Thank you.
My name is Mahathya Stairclaire, and I'm living in Adrian. I don't have a whole lot to say, I would like permission to approach you because the only thing I want to ask is that you take a look at this space. These are the kids that we are working with every day from September to June. He's still in high class. He wasn't thicker today.
My name is Soli, I'm a Sancho, I mean, we're going to be prepared for today, I actually don't really talk to people, but, um, I'm really sorry, you can see the. Better in your eyes. Speaking of the hardworking men, um, that are taking the hard jobs that nobody here wants, I can guarantee that. I have actually spent half of the day out in those fields. My dad taught me a lesson a long time ago and took me out to those fields and said, if you don't want to try harder than like this is what you might end up doing, which is hard. I lasted a couple of hours and I ended up getting kicked out there, I started pushing her aside and said, um, but anyhow. Those people's lives are not any less worthy than yours. I don't know what you're doing to help protect those people. I want to know in your heart, if you think that you are doing the absolute best that you can for citizens of your city. Do you look in the mirror and know that you're a good person? I'm expecting perfection, we're all, none of us are perfect, but I can look in the mirror and say that I'm on the wrong side of history. I can look in the mirror and say that I'm sticking up for these folks, I just happen to be more of you. I'm not any better than anybody else, people look at me and I'm told to go back to where I came from all the time, all the time. I'm from Adrian, my mom is from Adrian, my village is never set up out of this country, wherever would you like me to go? This is how we treat each other, this is how we treat people. When did this become okay? I don't understand how this is something that is so radical. Why is, why are we the radical ones? Would we always want to treat people with dignity and respect? If somebody came up to me without a badge, plain folks, expired badges, do you think that I'm just going to get into their car with them? If somebody came up to me and accused me of being here illegally. And there's cops across the street doing absolutely nothing, why would you appeal with that? And if you're not. Why do they think that you are and why do they continue to do nothing? You need to tell them that they cannot do that. We cannot feel unprotected in this city. I lived here except for going to school, in the U P, living a couple of years in Grand Rapids. This is my home. These people that we're not protecting are my friends, they're my patients. I'm not going to turn my back on them, and I hope that not many can do either. This is my personal moment speaking, so. When I was only a sixteen year old, I was helping these nations, we give friendship, helping actions. We are a space for kids to teach, speak up, or flexible, they feel something better than what we can handle. I may be young, I don't understand what this looks like. On Saturday, I'm sitting on hard couches, I'm responsible for this. I saw another team, somebody taking off, toward a group of Hispanic men who were detained by plain folks, Asians across the street. No uniform, no clothing, no slouchy. I didn't know this happened first, but there was the other faces on camera, something was wrong, something was dangerous. And even before I understood the full story, I thought that this was not the safety supposed to be. Later, when I watched the footage and I heard what those agents said, we don't need a warrant, my summit dropped. I suspect there are ICE people who live here, people who contribute to this kind of, people deserve that. We are told that if we need help, we can trust my lawyers, but they watch the justice unfold, they decide. What happens when the people that should protect us, we protect some of us? I pray for words like fairness, freedom, and rights, but what are the laws and organizations that those words would be made of? We are the nation, we believe in curiosity, courage, and commitment. We believe that everyone, regardless of how old they are, where they come from, the language they speak deserves dignity, deserves safety, deserves a little bit of fear. When you let family smash people from our streets with no ID, no warrants, no explanation, and we're not keeping us safe, or she just be afraid of our town. We refuse to grow afraid, we refuse to stay silent. The values we teach our children, kindness, accountability, fairness, do mean something. They have to apply outside this room, outside our homes, in this room too, right here, right now. We're often told that we are influential, but the truth is, we are also the present. We are already working, we are already resisting, and we are already leaving. And we're asking you, will you leave with us? Will you rise from the moment or leave back in silence and comfort? So I'm here to ask you, do you believe in the young people? Do you believe young people deserve to live in a town with law enforcement, respects human rights? Do you need a new process for our own, just to go to a more. And then you speak out against what happened or leave us from our own in silence and fear. We are not too young to notice, we are not too young to organize, and we are not too young to learn better. We are the next generation and we're watching what we do, thank you.
My name is Mahathya Klein, I'm 21 years old, I'm from Indianapolis, Indiana, I live in San Antonio. I've been there for four or five years, and I'm not sure what people think of this. What, how would we change anything? See, not all of them are going to school. Some people say, see, they have a family with our issues. See, they have a relationship on the street, without, without, without identification, straight up, we're the same as them, but they're out there. It's not fair, it is not fair. I've seen a number of people come to Saturday morning as per usual, and I've watched the comments. To me, it must be love, if these people make them, give you a lot of time. I appreciate the two face lies, completely within my own judgment. But I should be able to state, I'm from the streets of Adrian, knowing through this whole, I'm obvious. The guy should know what things are registered and what aren't. We should know who is right and wrong. And it's not fair. The people that are undocumented and illegal are being picked up and detained when men that are undocumented, unmarked are kidnapped. All I ask is that we are turning toward our, going back tomorrow and saving Adrian, because we all live here. None of us are safe. And what happens here, while with our white folks and members of every part of the political party affects all of us. And we cannot keep staying here acting like we're untouched by the laws, right, basis. Just please, take solid consideration of what everybody has said recently, because we're all aware of what's happening right now. We don't deserve this. And we ask for freedom and respect and liberty and justice for all, like, I just want to make it clear today. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for your presence. Thank you. Real quick, I can prepare anything, I just wanted to go and record the end of the voice. Please somebody, sorry, sorry. Very rapid, see, they're in Michigan. Born in Dixie, Florida, it's no longer Dixie, my daughter was born in Dixie, she, I have three little ones, three kids. They've been out at these demonstrations with us, they've been peaceful, they've been beautiful. When we left Saturday, I asked my kids how they felt because, you know, adults may perceive safety one way, but kids perceive another level of safety. And it's like, how did you feel surrounded by all those people today? Did you feel you were safe place, did you feel your love? And they did, surrounded by those people. But what those people were there for, it's exactly what we're working for today. And what we saw before our demonstration, like, it felt like you're saying that it's not just the big bull. Adrian, you're over 20%, our census is over 20% Hispanic and Latino. If average, I, I came here, I'm so excited to see that you have a translation law, you're using recognized. We have people who are terrified of us. They make our city. And so, I know the power that we have, the power that we lease, it's complicated with the Bible, but the basic mineral is we need a plan of place. When these men appear and have no documentation, because I'm A H D and I'm like, well, sure, I'm going to crawl, it's the teachers' back. And if man was coming in, somebody without any type of documentation and saying that they were a federal agent or something, they can prove it. I would run and I would take that person, I would run with them, like, that's. Who would be able to, there is no one who would be. And so, I hope that police officers have some type of plan of place that they can come up with that says, hey, if we don't have proof of anything, our child versus your local citizens. That's it. And I just want to be able to work somewhere, I can say that I want to see that happen. So thank you so much for your time.
I was born in Houston, Texas, Black and Latino. And I had a strong son.
And I had a small son, and I have this one son, but I can't remember what his name is.
Where's he at?
Oh, I'm sorry. And Friday, I was on my way home from work, and we're actually getting second point, putting on a house. And we have a campaign against work everyone else. Well, then I have Facebook, it's very almost fun, right? It's nice. And it's, it's hard, it's getting me to clap. Some of that post, I get a call, like, go up there and tell the voters. It's icy sometimes. And so I didn't, you know, I spoke Spanish to him, I'm not good at English. Yeah, I didn't know there was something that happened. They called, they told me, the boss said, okay, the multiple, go. It's been years, I don't know, it's all right, go on. And we were scared. And it shouldn't be that. Nobody should run from here. We're not running from here, this is not a fear. It's happening, I don't think that's the way it works. There are a couple saying about the police. It's my mother, they don't, they don't, they don't speak Spanish. It's surprising. They're not British, just British. And I heard the one in the meeting. There. This is separate, like, this is.
Oh, the people are most, you know, Adrian. As a community, we very excited, we value Hispanic members. As a country, we say that we value everyone, and our citizens, and the new policies as well. Here we have a tragedy happening, and here we have numerous supporters, numerous of your constituents, coming out there to speak and make their voices heard. People who we've never seen before would have been active long before us. I think it's, it's just that everyone wants to see what is happening, what's best for the United States, what's best for all of our people. So I hope that you'll, it is hard, see the pain, look at people's lives, and work to make it safer, better, and better. I did not throw a flag at school, I didn't legally support a flag, I will not protect everyone. I did not. I prepared to see this happen, so I hope that you. What act? Acted in the best way to protect everybody from this. These tragedies can go on. You know this as well, and I look forward to seeing what you do.
Derek Tim, you're president. I came, what they prepared a statement today, but I feel like every single person that came up before me did more justice to what's going on than I ever did. I just wanted to be able to voice, so, thank you.
Nancy Pelosi, Adrian, Michigan. Our youngest son was born in South Korea, and I know other people in my family. Never in my life did I think I would need to have this naturalization in my work and my goal, just in case. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amelia. Adrian. And I'm just going to actually read the poem. If the military's loyalty were aligned with the president, rather than the constitution or its precedents. If US immigration and custom enforcements kidnapped and broke into houses without warrants. If mothers and fathers were being dragged from their homes, and branded as criminals, their children not to look. If migrants were detained without due process and human dignity, I wonder, I wonder, who I would be. If it was nineteen forty-seven, and Senator McCarthy superheaded a campaign against the Communist Party, but lots of civilians were detained without warrants, based on general suspicions, would I think if I were it? Or if I lived in Salem in sixty-nine-two, um, the clergyman home would be accused. Would I amic with the rest of the colony? I wonder, I wonder, who I would be. Had I been alive in the Second World War, when there was fear of espionage on the American shores, and Franklin Delano Roosevelt, the president, incarcerated anyone of Japanese descent, and took those, those American residents to internment camps, searched their homes, seizing what they considered contraband. They froze their assets, branded them detainees. I wonder, I wonder, who I would be. If I lived in Birmingham in six, in nineteen sixty-three, and there were protests against immigration policies, would I raise my voice, would I rise to my feet, or would I cross to the other side of the street? Or if I was in Washington that very same year, and there was a national march, would I appear? Or would I be overwhelmed that doesn't affect me? I wonder, I wonder, who I would be. If I was in Stonewall on June twenty-eighth, would I resist, would I enlist, would I run the other way? If police raided bars because two women were dancing, or beat two men for loving, for romancing? If I was a Chinese woman, being arrested just simply because she was wearing a dress? Would I say something, or would I pretend I didn't see? I wonder, I wonder, who I would be. If there were rats, and everyone had signs that said nasty rotations of the people subscribed to the idea of that country, that would be made great, I guess I would say I didn't know that was an American. But I remember something about living your neighbor, and there was something else in those biblical papers, something about everyone being equal in the eyes of thee. I wonder, I wonder, who you would be. I wonder, I wonder, who I would be. I'm ready.
It's a formula here. I really just wanted to pop up because my last name is Fish. It's Polish, W Y S N E. That's how you spell it, where my family's from. You won't find that name outside the US, because all of them are dead. Killed, the last name. People like, like, show up. I'm only here because my family decided to leave Poland in nineteen seventeen, when the Bolsheviks. Let's move, narrow misses, than either, than I could be. Keep that in mind.
And what I'm saying, that's, and they have missions, which is choice, but I see. I have a standard, and I can be a few things, and you know, I know there are people, and I all very, very much share, a lot of people live here. It's my video that's been viewed eleven thousand times, but people are, it's been my job to hear today. That's information since this started on the eleventh of June, when somebody called, I speak a song, so I'm in Spanish at home. These people are all repeated, all six, their family, what if, I was to say, you know, things were at all? I piece this together through the Facebook messages I get from cousins who are scared, people who watch. They all had pizzas, they were there to get their daughter, and it's in her iterations. And she ran, and they called from Kensington Street, to the dockery, to the potash. And I can't stop hearing these screams, I don't like, I know it's probably seen, but I just, it just needs to be. So many fifty seconds, also, so many firsts.
Your cowards, come again, cowards.
At this there, what's in between them, and I was there, we tried. Thank you.
I don't have anything to prepare. I just got here, just like. Everybody's doing a great job. Can you just stay here in place, it's so upsetting. My name is Samara, and I live in Tom Beach. I just. I saw Ben's video earlier, and. The sounds. Of this mother, wife, waiting in English. I don't think Oliver would get to mine. And they aren't doing anything. I definitely didn't deserve what happened, should not be happening on any streets, but especially not in Adrian, when the. You know, twenty percent of the population is Hispanic, and it should not be happening. When our law enforcement swore to protect and serve unity first and foremost. These, whoever they were, we say in spice, but nobody knows, they said they didn't need to, um, show any identification. They said they didn't need a warrant. None of that seems reasonable, logical, or legal to me. And there has to be a process that would come a day like that. And if we don't have to, by law, assist them, we don't have to enable them either. And I think it's really important that we don't. They, they walked up, or sorry, they drove up in vehicles that were on board, with expired plates. I don't think that's normal, for heavily vehicles to have expired plates, but. We don't even know if they were, they say they were, and we don't even know what these planes were. But we know they left behind. On Sunday. The same family. It was relayed to us that ICE was back on the Kennedy Street, that house, and they were trying to get into the house. They were knocking, they wanted to buy it, and the evidence of the house was that it was terrorized. They were accused of hiding people, which they were not doing. And they did their rights, and they did not let ICE in. And the situation was worked out, and said, save twenty-one, save your people. You're taking this out, thank you. Sorry.
I know you have a reason when you talk that, quite a lot. Like, except here, people come, give you two cents, sometimes you go on, sometimes you take your things. They say, you're sometimes, you go back. I really hope that you're listening to this, processing, I'm scared of this. Crazy piss we live in, that's why I hope that something like this is a shame, every night. That's not something I thought I would experience. And I mean, that's, that's why I do have to be afraid of it at all. It's crazy, it's crazy, that people are living in fear, they don't leave their houses in this town, in the state, in this country. It's two thousand twenty-five. It's, like, that's a journey, so far ago, but as I get any closer, I realize that it is. And I don't know if the city, and the police department are organized in the state, to release, uh, the defense this weekend. I hope you are, and I hope the city, if you're in hand, the police department are out of the board. Policies, procedures, let people know what ICE had, and what you can do to look after. Because this is, this is what city government is supposed to do, this is what police department is supposed to do, you're supposed to look after. For the people that live here. And like, we're not saying, everything that happened this weekend, we don't know what happened this, this. And if it wasn't, how do we? I really hope that the city and the police department, what issues they have, you guys, you know, you're working on. I'm not sure what we can do, but I hope you guys know that it is what you want to go.
Hi, my name is Betsy Kerwin, and I'm from, I know some of you are, I'm from still Michigan, or Austin, actually. Um, I asked you to speak, I'm not from Adrian, I've worked here for nine years, I love the city. I just was inspired by a gentleman who just spoke, and he mentioned that, Nancy, Germany, what I saw for him, and it's not. My grandfather was an activist at first time. My mother was, she was brought up in calls for Germany, I saw her family there. And there's a lot of scars to my family from that time, and my grandfather was ripped from his house, in the winter, no shoes, no shirt. He was an activist in this little community, um, kind of like we are here. And a neighbor, somebody, a neighbor, went to the road, said, you gotta get out of here, there's shots. Um, he yelled to my grandmother, it's over, can you have, we have, we have pictures of them down there. They dragged the whites from the back of the pound truck, and, um, he was in prison for about three years. He didn't have a trial. Luckily, he got out, I think because he was considered white during, he was lucky to be, was genetically. But those scars ran deep in my family, and they, we still feel them now, um, that is my legacy. So, I just want to tell you that Hitler's time is not so far away, and it's not something off in the future. And I see it happening here, I see it happening in my own family, and it shakes me to my heart, because I remember my mother telling me stories about how tragic that was, how horrible that was for her experience that she'd watched her daughter, and she never got to see it. He suffered many problems because of that, it's, um, mental health issues, depression, health. I mean, those things ripple out for generations. So what's happening to the children now will ripple out for generations. We're doing damage that will last lifetimes. It'll take generations to fix it now. So, I'm not speaking of doing anything, I just want to let you know, I suspect the same is because it's not that. And we need to remember, we need to make sure it never comes again. Then.
I'm passionate to come see, and I just want to learn, you know, that, with these little white artists, and these little white artists, and, yeah, especially, you know, this one. Get down and pass them. We will now go to the public address of this.
Hi, my name is Katie Morgan, City of Adrian resident. And I'm two thousand eighteen, and the privilege of being the chair temporarily for speaking more than this question for the city. So, pretty invested, I'll go down next time. I have a few, have such many things, great stories, this is a devastating thing that's happening at the time right now. So, all I'm going to say is, if you can't see it from a simple, these are human beings, humanitarian approach, I do encourage you to look at it from a, like, economic and public safety approach. You can buy the bait, buy the stuff, and get it shipped to you, um, and give the next day. So, the fact that individuals are able to approach someone, threaten to pull them out of their vehicle if they don't get out momentarily, and not have to provide a warrant or any proof of their claim of authority, is very scary. Uh, from a financial standpoint, I mean, this, this is going to be hard on businesses, this is going to be hard. And these people contribute a lot to our, I mean, they spend money here, they live here. So if you can't look at it from a humanitarian approach, I do, you know, we're not going to stand up, keep showing up to meetings and advocating for these people. This isn't a doorway, so I really encourage all of you to sit with this, and decide what you can do to make it better. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm stripping this in China, because you know, it takes a lot, but I'm just making sure. We, Commissioner, do you have a summary of this report in your, or answer any options? So then we will move on to push our comments. I do see that, um, the signs, like, here, um, we asked the Olympic schools to hold contests, and they did. And, um, there's high school winner, middle school winner, and, um, junior school winner. And these three designs are available, put them in the Lycanthine, and your daughter, and show your, your product for Lycanthine, which is coming out in just a couple of weeks. We have many generous donors to the Lycanthine, and, um, so the, these signs are free. They were originally from, that deal was brought up, we, and the church to cover the costs, but they, um, through the generous donations, we were able to print off signs. If they don't want to take one to put in there tonight, they are available at City Hall, across from where you pay our bill, or you can, so we have them located in the public school office as well, which is located, um, it's, you feel like you're in a high school, but you go to the right, it's opposed to the left, go to the high school office, but the, you have a good school or office, it's not so bad. We are very appreciative, and however, for all of our children to getting this to happen. Yeah, so that's just, I just want to let you know, except here, we see them all side to as well. As part of the ice and in the, I also, it's, um, we know, series for businesses, so if you don't, it's, 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 it's all, it's tricky. To, so if you're welcome to take, you know, the advice and, um, once again, we absolutely, we're not the tears, if you would like to, um, do, say, we can see the others, and make it in the right direction for that. Thank you. Just to let you know, you have been heard, I, you know, play some of this video while I was texting, but in a second, so seeing the video. It's like, what is going on, who is this happening, so. We, you know, we do, our, 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 it's a kind of, that's why it's very quiet up here, I'm telling you. We understand, we just, I, you know, have that discussion, explore, if you don't, we can't do what we can't do, and we're gonna, we're gonna look into that, but it, it, it is being heard. Yes, it is very scary, um, I watched the video, and it was very scary, and I watched it again, and then I watched it again, because it was very frightening, and. Family that are Hispanic, that speak Spanish, and my family, so, I think, I think you understand that, I'm not great outside. So, um, we, we, we hear you, it's not, you know, we're listening, we hear you, it's just we got to figure out, because it is evolving, since we got to figure out. If there's anything we have to do, we can do. May I get a motion to adjourn? All in Caesar, say aye. Meeting is adjourned, thank you everyone.